Good evening. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for July 23, 2024. Very beautiful evening tonight. It's nice of you to join us here. City Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Robinson.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmember Zahn. Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Malakutian, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Of course. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
In justic for us, in clued democracy.
Okay, we have two proclamations tonight. The first one will be read by Councilmember Stokes. It's for the Disability Pride Month proclamation. We will read it, and then we will invite Lisa Greenwald and Andrew Young to come up and speak, and then we'll do a picture, and then we'll do our next proclamation. So go ahead, Councilmember Stokes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Whereas because of the efforts of disability advocates and activists, the Americans with Disability Act, ADA, was signed into law on July 26, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities and establish a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. And whereas the city of Bellevue embraces the diversity, culture, and contributions of many residents with disabilities in our schools, government workforce, and community by consistently and diligently working to make city programs, services, and facilities accessible to people with disabilities. And whereas the Diversity Advantage Plan was adopted in 2014 and includes the guiding principles of access and inclusion, emphasizing building an environment that values the abilities of all, removes barriers to participation, and provides accommodations for full engagement in civic life, and whereas decades after the signing of the ADA, individuals with disabilities still, unfortunately, experience disproportionate instances of discrimination, abuse, economic instability, and poverty, social isolation, and health impacts. And whereas numerous organizations, city staff in Bellevue work with constituents and communities to bring forth the promise of hope and freedom embodied by disability pride and envisioned by the passage of the ADA, and whereas the city of Bellevue affirms that we must continue to strive for equal access and opportunity for disabled individuals and uplift the disability community through our inclusive and accessible services and programs. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the city of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2024 as Disability Pride Month and urge all community members of Bellevue to support disability equity, recognize the contributions of disabled individuals to our communities, and commemorate the important historical passage of the Americans with Disability Act.
Thank you. So Lisa and Andrew, would you like to come up and speak? Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Lisa Greenwald, and I'm the CEO of Kindering. And I am here to express my deep gratitude to all of you for honoring Disability Pride Month. I'm also the mother of a neurodiverse son with disabilities and a Kindering graduate. And I'm also here alongside me, super thrilled to have Andrew, who's also an alumni of Kindering, who you will hear from at the end, just a minute. As a nonprofit serving children with disabilities, Kindering is part of the disability community. We're one of the largest and most comprehensive neurodevelopmental centers in the Northwest, serving thousands of children with disabilities and their families through pediatric therapies, early special education, family supports, and more. We're headed right down the next street over at the Crossroads Park in Bellevue. And last year, we served about 600 children with disabilities who are residents of Bellevue. And we also provide support to many Bellevue childcare programs on inclusive early learning programs. We're very grateful recipients of the Bellevue Human Services funding to help us do this. And now I'm excited to thank you all for using your platform to advance equity in yet another way. This proclamation is so important to us because advancing inclusion for people with disabilities is truly essential to our mission. And by issuing this, you are advancing that cause. You are sending a clear message to the families and the children and the adults with disabilities that they are seen and celebrated, and that as a society, we are committed to making changes to achieve full inclusion for people with disabilities. And for us at Kindering, we know our kids deserve nothing less. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you, Mayor Lynn Robinson, the city council, and the staff and all involved for issuing this proclamation. And I'm going to let Andrew Young have the last word. For those of you who don't know Andrew, he's been an integral part of our Kindering community for years, starting as a child receiving services at Kindering, and then as a volunteer for decades, and now as a strong voice for disability inclusion. So it is your turn.
My name is Andrew Young, happy disability day.
All right. Thank you. Beautifully said. Let's go get our pictures taken together?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, our next proclamation will be read by Councilmember Hamilton. It's a pretrial probation and parole supervision week proclamation. And Judge Lisa O'Toole and probation manager Craig Fritz will be the recipients. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas probation services are an essential part of the justice system, ensuring the supervision of individuals charged with a misdemeanor in Bellevue and providing an alternative to incarceration that allows clients to maintain constructive ties to their families and communities. And whereas probation services are an effective tool in reducing recidivism rates by identifying client needs and risk factors and positively influencing thoughts and behaviors through positive role modeling, collaborative problem solving, and targeted programs. And whereas the probation division supported 2,170 clients in 2023 with professionals who believe in the inherent worth and dignity of every individual and provide programming, services, and resource referrals for clients to promote personal change and accountability. And whereas probation services professionals form meaningful partnerships with community agencies to help meet the underlying needs of clients, which can help them avoid involvement with the justice system. And whereas probation services professionals support marginalized residents and advocate for community and restorative justice. And whereas probation services professionals integrate trauma-informed practices into client interactions and services, improving outcomes by prioritizing a relational approach to supporting clients. And whereas probation services professionals apply an equity lens to their work in meeting the needs of community members, including the use of translation and interpretation service, to ensure access as well as data tracking to monitor equity in client outcomes. And whereas probation services professionals are a source of positive change in their communities. Now, therefore, I, Dave Hamilton, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the city of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim July 22 through 26, 2024 as Pretrial Probation and Parole Supervision Week in Bellevue, Washington, and encourage all residents to honor these probation professionals and recognize the vital services they provide to our community.
Thank you. Judge O'Toole and Mr. Fritz. Welcome.
So good evening. I'm Judge Lisa O'Toole. I'm with King County District Court, and I sit in the Bellevue courthouse. And I've been the judge in the Bellevue courthouse and had the honor of presiding over Bellevue cases for the last eight years. And I want to thank the city council for recognizing Bellevue probation and for making this proclamation that it is indeed Bellevue Probation Week this week. Our probation team, of course, helps the judges, and they are our eyes and ears once we impose a sentence. And our probation team monitors whether a probationer complies with the terms of the sentence. Have they completed a class? Have they taken their treatment? Or have they re-offended? But this is really a very small fraction of what it is that Bellevue probation does. Our probation team, in reality, and each of our probation team members, they are in the business of changing lives. Our probation officers often encounter people at their very worst on their worst day. And often, people don't want to come to probation, and they're going simply because a judge has sent them there. But our probation officers establish positive relationships with their probationers. They put them at ease. They establish trust. And they develop solid working relationships with the probationers. They help probationers on journeys to sobriety, on journeys to stable housing, on journeys to meaningful employment. At each turn, our Bellevue probation officers offer guidance and support. Each member of our probation team has a meaningful impact on the lives of their clients. And our probation team helps to set a probationer on a path to success. And they restore probationer's sense of self-worth and of self-esteem. And it is this powerful impact that can be transformative for a probationer in their lives. And it's this work that is truly Bellevue probation's mission. Our probation team changed lives for the better, and they make our community a better and a safer place for all. I'm honored to work with our Bellevue probation team, and I extend my heartfelt gratitude to the mayor and to city council for this proclamation declaring it Bellevue Probation Week. Thank you so much. And Mr. Fritz, of course, our probation manager.
Thank you. Mayor, deputy mayor, council members, thank you so much for your support of the city of Bellevue Probation Division and your acknowledgement of the great work of all of our probation professionals. We, as the city of Bellevue, host our own probation services, and we provide a holistic approach to client accountability and support services, as Jojo Tool mentioned. We provide services that are an essential part of the justice system, ensuring that there is effective supervision of individuals and provide them an alternative to incarceration and allow them to maintain constructive ties to their families and to their communities. Probation supports the city's community safety and health strategic target area, ensuring that all people feel safe, valued, and welcomed. Our team includes a range of committed professionals with over 220 years of experience in the field of probation and community corrections. Our location at the courthouse provides clients with direct access to their probation officers and their program coordinators. In addition, different than many other probation programs in this region, we offer our own work crew, electronic monitoring, and other type of programming. So when the courts sentence clients to these services, they are immediately accessible right next door to the courtroom. Our jail alternative programs provide an option for clients to maintain their housing, their employment, and their community ties when it is safe to do so. These programs lead to a significant jail cost savings for the city, almost $1 million in 2023. This level of support and accountability has led to a relatively low recidivism rate amongst our clients, which supports the safety and the well-being of our entire community. So thank you, council, again, for your continued advocacy, your continued support for all that we do at the probation division and for the positive impacts it has on Bellevue's public safety. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Let's do a picture. Next up, we have approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you, Janice. Any opposed? Okay, oral communications. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are four pre-registered speakers on tonight's list. So before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. The total time for oral communications is not to exceed a period of 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to city of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. The presiding officer is authorized in both of those categories to give preference to people who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days or who will be speaking on an item that will come in front of the council within the next 60 days. Speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and only a maximum of three people will be allowed to speak to each particular side of a topic. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who is joining us virtually, and that is Barbara Braun.
And before she starts, I'm just going to remind our speakers to speak politely, respectfully, and no reason to swear, and no calling names. And if you say a lie about somebody that maligns their character, I will warn you. And if you continue to do so, I will ask you to leave. Okay.
Okay. Ms. Braun, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, deputy mayor, council, and city leaders. My name is Barbara Braun. My comments tonight are on behalf of People for Climate Action Bellevue. Tonight, the adoption of the Wilburton CPA ordinance is on the council's agenda. While we commend the work the planning team and commission have done to make it a TOD, we wish to point out some shortcomings related to climate and sustainability. We applaud the inclusion of Wilburton as a sustainability district. That said, we are worried that a strong sustainability framework is not being adopted tonight as this ordinance sets the overarching vision and policies for Wilburton moving forward. We believe a strong sustainability framework is needed to guide appropriate development in Wilburton. LEAD for Neighborhood Development, or LEAD ND, has been studied by the city and should be adopted as the standard in the ordinance before you. The positives of LEAD ND are familiarity. Most developers have experienced working with LEAD. It's comprehensive in all aspects of sustainability, and it requires verifiable certification, which allows us to know what we are achieving and to achieve consistent results. We also strongly recommend a similar framework to be adopted for Belvedere. At a more detailed level, we are worried about the effectiveness and reliability of the incentive-based development approach instead of having the city simply require a standardized approach using LEAD that would ensure predictable outcomes. Why? As you know, we collectively have a great deal of work to do within our city to put us on track to meet our climate commitments. Our challenge is to decarbonize our existing buildings and transportation while at the same time avoid adding new sources of greenhouse gas to our buildings and transportation sectors. With the plan to incentivize cleaner buildings as opposed to mandating a higher standard, we believe Bellevue will allow development to add to our sustainability a problem. By allowing anything less than certification at the LEAD Platinum level citywide, or at least in major new development areas like Wilburton, we fear Bellevue will not be able to meet its 2030 or 2050 emissions commitments. We must be mindful that we really are at a junction where the old ways do not work for the collective good any longer. We respectfully ask the council to hold on adopting the ordinance tonight and ask the staff to come back with stronger language that will put this historic redevelopment on the right track and set us on a path for a more sustainable and resilient future. The People for Climate Action team, including Court Olson, who is LEAD accredited, would be happy to discuss any details of our recommendations further. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Neil Molnik.
Good evening, Mayor, deputy mayor, council members. My name is Neil Molnik, and we own the Ford site in Wilburton at 4th and 116th. We've been involved in the Wilburton process going all the way back to the CAC and before, and we're really just thrilled to be here this evening. It's really an important moment with the CPAs and future land use map in front of you. I just want to take a moment to say the staff team, led by Emile, Janet, Justin, and Caleb, and many other staff members have just been fantastic to work with. Really, they've engaged deeply with stakeholders and listening to feedback along the way. We really appreciate this approach, and you can see the proof in the great work of the Wilburton Subarea Plan and Future Land Use Map in front of you. We enthusiastically support the Wilburton Subarea Plan and encourage the council to adopt it tonight. Specifically, we are excited about the broad and flexible vision the CPAs and map support. This is just going to be super important as we all work together to create a LUCA that enables development in Wilburton. As we move forward, we will continue to engage in the hard work of refining the draft Land Use Code amendments for Wilburton. We've heard from the council that housing production and affordability is a top priority. The draft LUCA imposes many costs that will make it harder, not easier, to see housing development occur in this already very tough development environment. While we all want to see a vibrant, walkable, transit-oriented development in Wilburton, we will need to prioritize so that we have an effective LUCA that supports day-one development and ongoing development into the future. We are starting this work with city staff, but need your leadership to help us confirm the priorities that will allow us to all work towards a LUCA that enables development. Thanks for your continued dedication and hard work on behalf of the city.
Our next speaker is Bill Finkbeiner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bill Finkbeiner. I'm here tonight to support the Wilburton Subarea Plan and the attached future land map, which is in front of you. I, too, want to thank the city staff for working with all the stakeholders through this process, including the Wilburton Property Owners Group. It was a lot of work that went into it, and they were very open-minded. We didn't always agree on everything, but we always knew where they were coming from, and we felt listened to, and we understood the decisions that they made, and we feel very good about the end result. Specifically, I want to call out Emile King and Janet Shoal, who led the team, and Justin Pangabon and Caleb Miller. They really were a great group of folks to work with, and you've got a great staff here. The CPA before you tonight represents a vision for the future of the Wilburton TOD area that I think will serve the city well. And we believe the policies represent sufficient flexibility to craft a Land Use Code amendments that work for Wilburton in the future. And so as we begin to pivot to that, as Neil just talked about, moving to the Land Use Code amendments, they're going to probably be a little more challenging. The reality of the market is that it's just really difficult to make things pencil right now for redevelopment. In the economic analysis that was commissioned by the city, you know, in order to sort of lay the groundwork for the LUCA, the analysis came back and said that rents have to go up 30%, all other things being equal, before you break even with new development. And that's the most cost-effective wood-frame-style new development, high-rise, even further out. So all the increases, if there are increases added during the LUCA, increased costs, that's going to ultimately require that much higher rents, that much further timeline before redevelopment starts to happen. We absolutely, I mean, the good news is, I really believe that our interests are aligned. We all want to see Wilburton redevelop into an exciting, new, urban, transit-oriented development neighborhood. And I think that we can work together on the LUCA the same way that we did on the comp plan to achieve that. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you. The final speaker on our pre-registered list is Alex Zimmerman.
Thank you very much. You give me some speak. I very appreciate you. I'm a disabled man. Thank you very much. Oh, timer working. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I disabled man physically and mentally for many years. So my question to you, my lovely counsel, and exactly to Mayor, why you always discriminate me, interrupt me in every meeting? I totally confused about this. I never broken law or rules ever for one second. So my question to you, Mayor, right now, where is you find this rules? You know what it's mean? Nice, polite, respectful? Is this in your house rules or this hair rules? Can you answer me? No? Why not? Why you cannot answer simple question? Where did you find this rules? In us constitution? In Bellevue court? Yeah? Where is this? In United States? Why you so quiet? Explain to me. Where is you find this? I cannot find this. You know what it's mean? Everything what is I find when you talking about this? So I'm totally confused. Are you mentally sick too, disabled? Why you doing this? Why you doing this? You why this seven supporter? You know what it's mean? Doing exactly identical. How is this possible, huh? Why are you doing this, huh? Why? Why you doing this again and again, again and again? Who are you? Are you all disabled, mentally sick? Or you Nazi disabled pig? Who are you? Stop, damn Nazi antisemite Gestapo pig. It's exactly who you are. Because law what is you have here? What is you bring 12 years ago? It's a unique law. No one in state Washington have this law. And I don't find this another state too. So you can speak only for 30 minute? 10 people? That's it? Yeah? So can you explain to me where you find this everything, huh? To me, you look like a Nazi Gestapo antisemite pig. You know what it's mean? It's not surprise me, so you elect Muslim. You know what it's mean? Iranian Muslim. Number one enemy of Jew in American.
Mr. Zimmerman. Mr. Zimmerman.
Number one enemy of Alex Zimmerman, Donald Trump. I know what is you do this.
Mr. Zimmerman, I'm asking you not to insult.
You broke the law what is you talk right now. You understand me?
That's your warning.
You dirty Nazi pig.
Okay.
You understand this?
That's enough.
You need stop on this.
I'm going to call a break right now and ask Mr. Zimmerman to leave the meeting. We are back in session, and I know you're going to ask if there are any other speakers. So go ahead.
That was the end of our pre-registered list. So I'd ask at this point, we do have some time remaining. If there's anyone joining us in council chambers who would like to make a comment to the council, please come forward. Or if you're online, use the raise hand function. Or if you can state your name for the record.
Yes, and before my time starts, I just want to let you know, I did try and register on a mobile device and appeared to go through, but the CAPTCHA function to verify seemed to be a little.
You're not human.
Little wonky, yeah. I've been called worse. Actually, thank you for having a good sense of humor. For the record, I'm Todd Woosley. My address is 10633 Southeast 20th Street here in Bellevue. I'm an Anatai resident, former vice chair of the city's transportation commission, and a Wilburton property owner. First of all, on behalf of all our citizens and me, thank you for all you do. You put up with a lot, and as we just witnessed. So we truly appreciate your service here, coming here as often as you do and all the other things you do in the community to make it a great place. And we do appreciate that. And I'm sorry you have to put up with some things. What I'd like to talk to you about is two things related to Wilburton. First, support for the ordinance to adopt the vision. We've had property in Wilburton since the mid-1960s. My dad bought it because it was the geographic center of Bellevue. And now the vision is for it to actually reach its potential, which is great. I would fully support that. The one thing that is absent in the ordinance though is recognition for the incredible investments the city's made in the transportation system, particularly the TFI funded projects. We have $300 million worth of arterials that will support the majority of the trips that will be created from Wilburton's redevelopment. So I think the city should get credit for that and recognize that asset. But as a couple other speakers mentioned, as we move from the vision into the implementation, I'm here to ask for your help. We've, the city has community attributes. It has done a great economic analysis. And as was previously mentioned, things don't pencil. They're very far underwater. So to take the time to make sure that this is economically viable would be well worth it, in our opinion. The way that I would recommend would be to take a look at,[1789.16] The way that I would recommend would be to take a look, use the model of community attributes, make sure that the assumptions that are in it are accurate, and then, based on that, look at the land use code amendments and make sure that those are economically viable, given current and likely future development scenarios, cost of labor, materials, market demand, et cetera. And then, once that's done, which is what the private sector's going to do when they look at every piece of land there to do it, so I think we ought to do it as a city to, you know, make sure that we're on the same page, then we can look and see how much we can afford to extract from these properties for public amenities through an incentive system. So really, would love the council to direct staff to use the economic modeling process, make sure the assumptions are great, make sure the land use codes align with that so that it does pencil, and then we'll be able to go from day one when they're adopted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And mayor, I did not see any additional hands, so I'll turn it back to you.
And nobody else in the audience? Okay, so we have a report on our tourism promotion area, so city manager, would you like to introduce that?
Thank you, mayor and council. Our first presentation tonight is a report from the Bellevue-Redmond Tourism Promotion Area Advisory Board. You'll hear it referred to as the TPA, and I would like to welcome the board chair, Caroline DeMarcarian, and from our community development department, Lori Hoffman, our arts and creative economy manager, and Liz Flores, our tourism specialist. They are here tonight to share some highlights of the 2024 TPA work and also the TPA recommended budgets and strategic plans for 2025, and they will be seeking council direction this evening to return with legislation as part of the budget process to approve the TPA budget, along with our budget. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lori.
Thank you, city manager. So such a pleasure to be here tonight, council. Tourism plays a vital role in our local economy and injects new dollars into our community, and is a key economic sector with significant potential for growth opportunities. Traditionally, our tourism sector has been focused on business travelers and conventions, but notable progress is being made to expand our traveler base to include leisure travelers, in part due to the work of the tourism promotion area that you'll hear tonight. For the rest of the presentation, I'll hand over to Liz and Caroline to give you the details.
After this presentation, we will request council consider directing staff to return with legislation as part of the 2025-26 budget process to support expenditures consistent with the annual budget and strategic plan as recommended by the Bellevue-Redmond Tourism Promotion Area Advisory Board. This presentation will cover an overview of the program, a summary of this year's progress so far, and finally, the overview of the 2025 annual budget and strategic plan. And now I will pass the presentation over to our chair, Caroline DeMarcarian.
Thank you, Lizeth, and good evening, mayor, good evening, deputy mayor, and council members. It's really a pleasure being here. So I am, I'm going to share a little bit as a refresher. The BRTPA was approved by Bellevue City Council in February 2023, and we are now into our inaugural year. Increased tourist benefits our entire community because overnight visitors spend an average of up to two and a half times the price of their lodging costs in the community. They spend it on local restaurants, small businesses, attractions, and nightlife. Increased tourists also benefits the community because tourist assets are community assets. Residents can also take advantage of everything that tourists offers in their own city, a lively culinary scene, fun things to do with friends and family, and beautiful public spaces. How does it work? Fees currently being collected by lodging businesses is $2.50 per night, are submitted to the Washington Department of Revenue, which remits them to the city of Bellevue as the legislative authority of the BRTPA. Revenues are maintained separately from general fund. The city of Bellevue also maintains separate accounts for Bellevue and Redmond, with revenues collected for each zone being used only for the tourist promotion of that zone. The advisory board, with four members from each zone, recommends to council an annual budget and strategic plan for the use of TPA funds, which is what we will present to you tonight. The board has been meeting since August 2023. The documents presented tonight were developed in strong collaboration with the organizations currently contracted to administer the TPA funds for each city, Visit Bellevue and One Redmond. Here you will find the current members of the advisory board, representatives of their community. Both TPA zones are equally represented on the advisory board. There are four spaces for Redmond stakeholders and four for Bellevue stakeholders. We have two seats, one for each zone vacant at the moment, and have just concluded an application period. The advisory board recommends candidates to the city manager for appointment.
Here, we present to you some highlights from the inaugural year. We can see exciting developments in both cities. In the Bellevue zone, Visit Bellevue is in the process of updating its destination development plan, laying ground for the development of tourism in the city for the next 10 years. An overseas marketing campaign has been launched in Japan, along with the creation of tools with which our community can effectively welcome these visitors when they arrive. Culinary tours are in the works, highlighting Bellevue's exciting gastronomy and partnering with a celebrity chef. Visitor communication has also been improved with welcome kiosks in several hotels, as well as a mobile welcome center, which gives people information on what is happening in Bellevue. We all know and love Bellhop and are happy to report that it is here to stay in the In the Redmond zone, there are significant achievements and highlights to report as well. The city of Redmond has updated its own tourism strategic plan with collaboration from One Redmond. One Redmond has hired dedicated tourism staff, a director of tourism, to steer the organization's tourism strategy with industry expertise. Effective research and planning are building a strong foundation for the future of tourism through administration, memberships, and regional collaboration.
So now for the budget and strategic plans. Budgets for both zones adhere to allowable uses and follow the same formats. Revenues will be used in adherence to the inter-local agreement for activities designed to increase tourism and convention business. We have kept the same areas of focus as the previous plan, which was approved by council in October 2023. Please note that the full budget and work plan have been provided as an attachment. So you could see here, starting with the strategic plan, here we see some of the overall goals for the Bellevue zone by the end of 2025. 2.4 million visitors, a 600,000 increase from 2023 benchmark. Increase citywide hotel occupancy to 72%. That's a 9% increase. Increase weekend hotel occupancy to 66%. That's a 5% increase. By achieving these goals, we would see an additional 300 million plus in local economic impact. This is money back to our communities, our small businesses, all making Bellevue an enjoyable, prosperous city for visitors and residents. To achieve these goals, Visit Bellevue has a variety of programs and initiatives in the strategic plan, all of which aim to make Bellevue a desirable place to visit. A partnership with a celebrity chef promises to boost our culinary visibility, both in Japanese and English, as well as culinary tours, which will allow people to explore Bellevue's diverse food. The sales team is very hard at work, hoping to increase our meeting business. Exciting, sustainable ways of enjoying the city are in the plan, with bike hop, electric bikes available at some hotels, and electric boat tours, which will make enjoying the waterfront accessible for both residents and visitors. Outdoor tours will guide small groups to a waterfall experience and finish up tasting local wines. For the Redmond zone, the goal is to increase overnight visitors by 8% by the end of 2025, bringing in more people to enjoy the city. The creation and marketing of programs that will drive overnight stays is also a focus, as well as the development of One Redmond's tourism master plan. This plan will complement the city of Redmond's tourist plan, creating a thorough and strong path forward to tourism to grow. To achieve this, One Redmond's strategic plan has some exciting, exciting tourist development planned, including a shuttle to Woodenville, allowing people to enjoy their day and return home safely. Because Redmond has the hotel capacity that Woodenville lacks, this is a win-win for all. As mentioned, the master plan is an important priority which will allow for successful tourist development in the future. A concierge program is in the works, which will educate from the staff on Redmond's attractions, and the investment in marketing which will enhance destination awareness. On this next slide is the actual annual budget. So the first line where it says the projected collection after administrative fees, so it's kind of the revenue, and anything underneath, the marketing down are all the expenses. Both, you'll see the two columns, one is for Bellevue and the other one is for Redmond. So the differing amounts allotted to each bucket reflect the individual needs and priorities for the individual zones. These numbers are a projection and our maximum amount for the 2025 calendar year. Any additional revenue generated will go into each zone's reserves. So we ask now that council consider directing staff to return with legislation as part of the 2025-26 budget process to support expenditure consistent with the annual budget and strategic plan as recommended by the advisory board. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you so much. Welcome tonight, also. Appreciate the work you've done.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'm going to start off with council member Lee. Let him ask any questions or comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thanks, board chair. I appreciate your volunteer, and that's good for everyone, and I appreciate the staff working on very new activities. We're all trying to learn and figure out, you know, how to make sure that we spend our dollar well. As you may recall, I was, when we discussing this, I had a lot of questions to ask. So, so far, I believe that last year has proven to be very productive, especially like the City Bellhop program. That's wonderful. You see them running around, a lot of people like it, and I believe in the mayor uses So I think these are the things that definitely are utilizing the money appropriately, especially for the people, the hotel industry, who's willing party to, you know, invest in this program. So I'm really glad that we're looking forward to the next year, and I particularly appreciate, you know, I mean, we as a council don't really need to pick on everything we would like to see, but we depend on the board and also the staff come with good suggestions. One of the things I really appreciate is the global tourism. I think that's still a very important area, because as you know, our region is over 50% of people from different countries, different cultures, immigrants. So I think they bring the population, the community from elsewhere to come here. It's challenging because they are not familiar with us here, right? So we need to help them. How do we let their people from their country to know? So that's a natural tendency, they would like to come here anyway. So I think we need to utilize our asset, our advantage, to attract as many people as possible to come here. That's one. The other one is, one of the attraction is using technology, business, business, economic connection. It's good to have tourism here, but I was talking to the staff, tourism is very volatile. When the economy is not good, when we all need to have more, more money, that's when the tourism goes down, so that's when we need it most. But the one that can really compensate, can help also bring people to visit us, is really economic development. How do we attract people to bring business here, to start business here, to conduct business with us, so we promote business as well? So I think business is a very important element of this. So we need to look at countries around us, be it be the, in Asia, or Europe, or wherever they are, how do we attract business as well? And we have partners, we have, like, we have Seattle Partners, and we have PSRC Economic Development. We all are looking at attracting business to come to our region. So I think this is somewhere we can also be partnering and looking at, thinking, how do we have our mindset that we are attracting business well? Because business would be good for your hotel stay anyway, right? So I think the tourism would complement the activities. Eventually, COVID effect is going to wear down, so people would be actually coming to meet in person, do business in person. So I think this is an area we need to capture. When they come back, we want to be in the position to attract them. So thank you for presenting that, and I'm very glad that we are working within our budget to make sure that we can accommodate all those opportunities that we need to. So thank you very much, and I definitely support your budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member, oh, sorry.
No, I just said, thank you.
Okay. Council member Hamilton.
Great. Thank you, mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Found it very compelling. I, along with council member Lee, certainly support the budget and the plan. Just wanted to share briefly a story, a personal story. I have a family member who is part of a national organization of school communications professionals, and they booked their annual event here in Bellevue. It took place just a couple of weeks ago. Sold out quicker than any event before. They wound up having to find additional space, but they were thrilled with what they got, the support they received from Visit Bellevue, and it's just, for me, an easy, recent example of how effective all of you are and how effective this plan is. So just think that certainly in favor of it, certainly appreciate all the positive feedback that I got from my relatives, so certainly in favor. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Council member Noonhouse.
Thank you. As liaison to the Bellevue Convention Center Authority, I just have some, some thoughts on this, and first of all, Lorraine Lizeth, thank you, and Chair DeMarcarian, thank you for being here this evening. Great presentation. You know, this is a very exciting budget and activities slated to really what I feel is that's going to amplify what Visit Bellevue is doing so well already, and give us the opportunity to try some different things and be creative, and as we already have been doing, you know, Bellhop, when we first started that, it wasn't being done at all in this region at least, and now we're the envy of the region, and Lori, you just presented. I'm also liaison to the East Side Transportation Partnership, and every municipality on the east side wants a Bellhop as well, and they see the success of it. And we've had 70,000 riders since it launched now, 10 months, and about 50,000 rides. So people are not just going in there by themselves, they're with their friends or colleagues, or it's just fantastic to see. And now to extend that to, to the boat tours, in an electric boat, by the way, too. So good for the environment, and they finally got that off the ground, so just thrilled what this, what this can mean for the, for the future. And having said that, you know, Visit Bellevue is doing such a great job. We had an update this morning at the BCCA, and, and, sorry, in June alone, Bellevue hosted 210,000 overnight visitors, generating an estimated economic impact of 163 million. That's just in June. And the citywide hotel occupancy was 82%, which is an increase of 10% compared to 2023. So that's an average daily rate of $230, generating a total of 29 million total lodging revenue for the month. So with this, this is coming at exactly the right time, and I believe we have the exact right team in place, and I really appreciate the thought and care that you took in terms of preparing the, the plan and, and the budget for this, and, and other things that are working so well, too, such as the mobile visitor center, or SCOUT, the official name, and then getting the great PR that we're getting, as council member Lee mentioned, both domestically but internationally as well. In fact, a couple of weeks ago, the Vancouver Sun featured Bellevue very prominently, Vancouver British Columbia, by the way, not Washington, very prominently, what a great place Bellevue is, and all the great things and activities and restaurants. And speaking of restaurants, I love the culinary program, which has just tremendous potential as we have more and more great restaurants, a lot of them. A lot of them minority-owned restaurants as, as well, and bringing their culture and their flavors from around the world to, to share with us and everybody that visits our fine city. So, so again, right time for, for, for this with the right team, and I just can't wait to see the results of this going, going forward. So thank you for all your hard work, Chair. Really appreciate it and look forward to seeing a lot of great results. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Noonhouse. Good insights. Let's see, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you. This is, this is really exciting, and my cohorts here are really working together on this, and it's really good to see something of the council really getting into this. It's not always been that way in a sense in the city, and so it's, it's just been a turnaround or a really building process. And just amazing the, the things that we get back on this. And the biggest thing we get back on this is people enjoying this and being here, coming here and seeing us. You know, the Bell Red Tourism Promotion Area is a bright, bright idea. It's really great and be nice to have other, we have other cities around us, and I expect in some time we'll expand on that, but really working with Redmond and Bellevue is fantastic. You know, arts and culture, as cohorts have, have mentioned already, is, and enhancing it with making it a program and integrate the arts and the culture and activity and programs with partnerships and all is, is something that is so, it's, it's been so productive on a lot of things, and particularly on people seeing Bellevue as a place to go. And we've always been kind of that, but not like this. It's just been fantastic. And the, you know, it's also been exciting in terms of just working with staff and working on programs and, you know, Lori Hoffman is the arts and cultural, they, staff person, and I'm the liaison to the Arts Commission. And it's, it's just been over this last 10 years to see the differences. And I think one of the reasons Bellevue has been so progressive and looking, people coming here and we're, our Bellevue attitude is very positive about things, even when we have a pandemic and other stuff happening, because we know, we have all these things in Bellevue that you can, that lead to a better life, that are exciting, and we're expanding these things in all kinds of different ways. And we tie into and use it as a part of the, as an example in arts and, and cultural peace, but we have this amazing Bellevue Botanical Garden, and it's arts and culture. So it's just great to see and things that, you know, been mentioned already about the, the things that Bellevue's doing and the other groups working on that. It's, it's the, we're, we're really the real jewel in the region on this now. And the staff has just been fantastic, the, the people who are working with us, who volunteer, and it's just great. So it's, it's nice to be able to talk about this because, you know, there are other things that are having, we struggle with and do everything, but this is, this is one of our really bright stars, and it goes back to the people, like three of you here, working on this and putting it together. So I'm just so excited to be part of this, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. I also appreciate the presentation and all the work that you do. You know, I was just thinking about how important the TPA is to Bellevue's competitiveness because other cities have been collecting this and we hadn't, so I'm really glad that we leaned into that and making great progress. So glad that Bell Hop's going to be able to run, and we passed through the pilot and has funding for that. So I think that is really well-used, and as my colleagues have already said, is such an economic engine for our city and the region. I especially like the culinary focus because I think that we all love to eat, and as we think about especially the international travelers being able to be part of the culinary experience is really important. I actually had a chance to meet Chef Shota at the Japan Fair a couple of weeks ago and learn a little bit about some of that, the work that we're doing. I agree with the modest increase in the goals that is in the strategic plan, and I really appreciate the fact that, as my colleagues have said, it takes money to make money. And so the, the investments that we're making and some of the expenses, I think it makes a lot of sense to continue to have the revenue that we have and to be seen as a tourist destination. I run into many from around the country that are very, have heard of Bellevue and see us as a tourist destination. And I believe that we have our Chocolate Festival that's going to be continuing this year and then adding the boat tours. I think those are all really exciting things that adds to the, the group of offerings that Bellevue has. I think when we actually start moving forward with the Grand Connection and the next phase of Maidenbauer Bay Park will even add to all of the offerings that the city has. The only question that I have is, as you consider the destination development plan coming up, I'm wondering with the two-line opening whether the Bell Red Art District could be a space where you might think about, you know, we now have some wine tasting spaces that are there and some music venues and plays, whether that might also be a place where we might think about Bell Red Art District as a tourist destination, and then, you know, maybe as part of that, then eventually Bell Hop can also kind of bring tourists there as well. So even though the hotels aren't necessarily there, I think that, that is certainly a space where it can be a draw for, for tourism into Bellevue. So I just wondered what your thoughts are about that.
Absolutely. Councilmembers on, we're really excited as we are working with Visit Bellevue and they are moving through that destination development plan to see the Bell Red Arts District heavily featured and discussed. I think that is something that our hotel community and our tourism sector is really looking at as a, as a wonderful opportunity for, it's, it's more than just where our guests stay, it is what our guests do while they are here, especially as we lean into our culinary work. The Bell Red culinary scene has already gotten some traction. There's some wonderful articles in Seattle's Eater recently around the incredible offerings in the Bell Red. So we're excited to see that work grow.
Oh, that's great. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Councilmembers on. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chair Caroline, Lizette, Lori and Jesse. Thank you so much. Great presentation, the BRTPA budget and all of the strategic plan. There is a lot of hard work goes to that, so I appreciate you. I have just one question and then maybe three comments. One, you showed us some goals and then you showed us some initiatives. Is there any connection between them? Is there any way that we can realize with a specific metrics that how we can track the effectiveness of this investment into our goals?
We can come back with a much broader presentation, or we could follow up with the ways that the individual goals are tracked against metrics and deliverables.
Your yes would, you know, is enough for me.
Okay.
Thank you. Just some comments. I hope we can ensure that these initiatives benefit the broader community, not just hotels and tourism business. I think they go hands to hands. I was very, I'm very happy to see some budget for marketing, some small budget for research. Hopefully, we can explore innovative marketing strategies and emerging technologies that can attract new visitors. And finally, we will see in many regions, especially us, there is some seasonality. We have a great season, then we don't have, and that's impact our tourism. So if there is any initiative that we can attract visitors when there's a low season, that would be awesome. Thank you so much.
So I've just gotten so much good feedback from visitors to Bellevue and from people who put events on in Bellevue, and they just say the whole experience is really positive. So I'm always proud to hear that, and thank you for all the work that you do to make it a good experience for people. Two, let's see, one other thing, Councilmember Lee reminded me of, you know, the beautiful cross-cultural connections that we're making between the restaurants, between the celebrations, between the arts programs, and just making those all more accessible to people. And so that brings up one of my recommendations, which is, would love to have a community calendar that really is, shows all the events going on at all the different parks or event spaces and talks about, you know, how to get in if, if it's open to the public. Two, I love the bike rental thing from the two hotels, but I know we're having issues with e-bikes on sidewalks right now, so I'd love you to partner with Cascade Bikes and get the e-bike rules about riding. There are actual laws in place, and it would be great to share those with e-bike riders, and it would be great for us to have those more public for the whole community. And I think that is it. So thank you, thank you very much. We appreciate it. So, is there a motion?
Yes, absolutely. I move to direct staff to return with legislation as part of the 2025-2026 budget process to support expenditures consistent with the annual budget and strategic plan as recommended by the BRTPA Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, and it passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have the report of our city manager, Ms. Carlson.
Thank you. So I'm going to take a moment to thank Mark Heilmann and Serena Miller, who are coming to the table for their work this year to organize three fantastic neighborhood walks and for also having a very quick turnaround to come here tonight to share a little bit of the highlights of those walks. These walks are annual, and they're an opportunity for the directors and staff and for me to meet with the community in their neighborhood, hear from the residents, hear from the businesses, and I particularly truly value that opportunity. And it, it happens because of the hard work of Mark and Serena and the team to organize them and to make sure that we're all there having a good time, and also appreciate the council members who were able to join this year. So with that, I will turn it over to Mark, I believe, to kick it off. So thank you very much.
Thank you, city manager. Well, good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and Council. This evening, Serena and I are with you to be able to provide an overview and a report on last week's neighborhood walks. Tonight's presentation is for information only. Having begun in August 2017, this is the eighth year of meeting residents in their neighborhoods. And I do want to begin also with thanks for our staff, for our colleagues in every department that have joined us on neighborhood walks. We have gotten to a point now where I have to limit how many staff come, they enjoy these so much. But also, council, thank you so much for your participation and, and support, helping to promote. Residents very much enjoy having time with you that's informal, but also to acknowledge the star of neighborhood walks are our neighbors, are our residents that we get to visit with, who come out sometimes on warm evenings, but they share their neighborhoods with us in ways that are, that are moving, that are insightful, and we appreciate them tremendously. The purpose of neighborhood walks is to give residents and city leadership an opportunity to engage in, in informal and productive conversations about what matters most to our community while experiencing Bellevue's unique neighborhoods together. With this year's walks, we have now visited all of the 16 neighborhood areas of the city. But the most important focus beyond where we have gone is who we have gotten to do these walks with, visiting with residents in their beloved neighborhoods, and about what they enjoy and their emerging concerns as well. Over the years, the highlight is always the individuals and the community groups, and just for example, in Crossroads, in West Bellevue, Bellevue College area, Wilburton, Newport Hills, Somerset, East Gate and, and the rest as well. This year, we walked with residents in the areas of Lake Hills and West Lake Sammamish, starting at Lake Hills Community Park. And for the first time, we were in Factoria, and our final 2024 neighborhood walk was in West Bellevue, starting at Surrey Downs. During all of the walks, we heard recurring concerns and ideas about traffic patterns and volumes, about public safety, including mailbox theft and unsafe driving, housing affordability with specific comments about seniors aging in place and increased property taxes, the changing demographics of neighborhoods, and neighborhood leaders intent to respond and to help their new neighbors with belonging. And finally, the request for assistance with young adult engagement. As in previous years, we heard from residents how much they enjoy and care deeply about our community and their immediate neighborhood. There is an emerging desire, which we first started to hear last year from residents new to the region and from young adults. The request is for opportunities for connection and civic engagement. Some of these residents are very new to the city, even moving here in the last month from Minneapolis and Dallas, and from those that have grown up in Bellevue and are now adults, and they're looking to find where they belong and how they can make an impact in their own community. One resident responded, as, as we reached out to get some follow-up comments, that they are excited to connect and have an impact on the ability to lift up the young adult voice in our city. He also said that he would love to positively impact his community of Bellevue. Another resident shared there is a strong feeling among the 18 to 35 age group who are enthusiastic about Bellevue's amenities, but they feel there is a need for more public spaces where they can engage in fun activities and to foster intellectual conversations. Making new friends is an important aspect for us. Serena is now going to share comments that we received from residents who walked with us last week. Serena.
Thank you. On our first walk, starting at Lake Hills Community Park, one resident said, "It was fun to be part of the walks. It was beneficial, and I enjoyed my conversation with city staff. I was able to see faces from the departments that I've interacted with in the past, which is also great. I also loved that residents had the floor." We heard many comments about housing affordability, including the desire of seniors to stay in their current homes. There was also conversation with residents and response from police about fireworks and the damage around the Fourth of July. Another resident told us, "As you are all well aware, housing affordability is a major issue. Young people and families are finding it more difficult to afford living in Bellevue and its neighborhoods." One resident said that it seems like there are more speeding vehicles and reckless driving in their neighborhood. We also visited with two newer residents who moved here in the last year, and their comments centered on all that they enjoy, including the walkability and safety of Lake Hills, but they mentioned limited public transit as one of their concerns. On our second walk in Factoria, we heard about increasing traffic volumes. Specifically, it was stated, "Traffic around Factoria will continue to increase due to many new housing units in development." One resident asked the speed limit on 124th Avenue Southeast to be lowered from 35 to 25 miles per hour. Several residents asked for an organized Factoria advocacy group that could include Factoria Marketplace, small businesses, and interested residents. One resident shared with us, "The Factoria Walk was a showcase of residents' daily experiences, which is particularly important given the concerns about public safety and increased traffic. Additionally, this walk helped me connect to other Bellevue residents that have recently moved to the neighborhood that are looking for a place to connect with young adults and other recent arrivals." A Newport High School student said on the walk, "It was great to know more about the place where I go to school and see an outside perspective on my high school. It was also really cool to see an Osprey nest pointed out by residents." Another resident shared with us, "It was helpful for my husband and me because we got to meet officials we voted for but had never met in person. It was interesting to hear their opinions on some discussion items. For the city staff, it was hopefully beneficial to hear some of the concerns raised, but also that their work is appreciated and valued by us. We also heard there's a lot of benefit in having folks from local government on the ground in the neighborhoods they serve, available to answer questions and provide feedback to residents. I feel the Factoria neighborhood has several challenges that may be more elevated than other areas of the city." On our final walk in West Bellevue, starting at Surrey Downs Park- On our final walk in West Bellevue, starting at Surrey Downs Park, we heard from several residents about the benefits they're experiencing with the new two-line, including the ease of use and enthusiasm for the completion of the system. There was also an emphasis on sound transit being stewards of their property. There were many comments concerning the number of residents that have moved from the neighborhood, but also the desire to connect with newer residents in the neighborhood. We also visited with residents who have lived in the same Surrey Downs home for 50 years, and we learned about why they enjoy the area, including walkability. Finally, we've received comments from a resident on the walk. "It's always fun to explore hidden jewels around the city. Walking is a great way for casual communication. It's also symbolic when we walk towards the same direction. If we talk in an office setting, most likely we will sit on different sides of a table facing opposite directions."
One resident shared with us that city officials often get pegged as not caring or paying attention. "I know that is not true, but being face-to-face helps to build the kind of relationships that put that attitude to rest. When we believe we are being listened to, it makes a big difference in how we work together." I will point out as well on that Surrey Downs walk, we had one of the gentlemen that said he had moved to the neighborhood, built a house with a deck to be able to observe the trains as it goes by. So it's interesting, kind of as the years go by, additional perspectives and now some of the great amenities that we're enjoying. Finally, this year's neighborhood walks were very comparable to previous walks in many respects, as residents enjoy and are committed to their neighborhood and greatly appreciate the city's amenities. But each year, we hear the specific concerns in our unique neighborhoods, as neighbors share their experiences with traffic, affordability, and desire for connection, belonging, and community service. And again, council, thank you so much for your participation. We enjoy getting to do this with you. Thanks. Good evening.
Thank you so much. Great, great report. Is that it, city manager?
I have no more reports tonight. Thank you.
Okay. We have the consent calendar to do. So is there a motion to approve that?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with that, we're going to take a break until 25 after. It's about eight minutes, Janice.
Thank you, mayor, council members. So the last item tonight is an ordinance to adopt the proposed Wilburton Vision implementation. And this ordinance amends the comp plan with the Wilburton, proposed Wilburton Transit Oriented Development Area policies and the land use map. As you know, this process has been thorough, lasting several years, and it included, most recently, the Planning Commission work and a council study session at the end of June, in which the council provided direction to bring this back for final approval. This is a significant milestone in laying the groundwork for the Wilburton redevelopment. And tonight, the staff is seeking your council action, final action on this proposed ordinance. So we have Emile King, the Director of Community Development, and Janet Shul, our Strategic Planning Manager, to go over the presentation. With that, I'll hand it over to Emile.
Thank you for the introduction, Acting City Manager Carlson. And good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and members of council. Following our brief presentation tonight, we will be asking council to consider adopting the Wilburton Vision implementation. And this is comprised of the comprehensive plan ordinance that is in your packet. This does mark a significant milestone for the implementation of the Wilburton Vision. The comprehensive plan amendment is comprised of policies and future land use designations for Wilburton's Transit Oriented Development Area. The details of the recommendation from the Planning Commission were discussed with council on June 25, and we received direction to bring it back for council consideration for adoption. The policies within the comprehensive plan amendment focus on these key priority areas that do tie back to the foundation of the 2018 Citizen Advisory Committee vision and move it forward. The policies support cultural and economic opportunity, affordable housing, sustainability, including work on a sustainability district, open space, and natural systems.
So the future land use map you see here is for the Transit Oriented Development Area. So it will implement land use designations, and those set the framework for establishing new land use districts in our land use code. The new mixed-use districts in the Transit Oriented Development Area will allow for and encourage development of a density and a mix of uses that supports transit use, provides an opportunity to live, work, and play in a walkable, vibrant community. And this has been one of the focal points of our discussions with Planning Commission and as recently with you on the 25th. Yeah, thanks. The comprehensive plan amendment provides guidance for outcomes and opportunities in addition to the built environment changes that are anticipated with those land use designations being changed. These transitions are taking Wilburton from what it is today, which is a more auto-oriented community, to one that will be walkable, transit and trail-oriented. And it will include a number of guidance for a number of initiatives that are underway, strategies, and tools that we are working on. And those are noted here on the slide and include things such as the land use code amendments, which you've heard already about. We're working with community, and they are reviewing those with us and stakeholders, as you've heard from this evening. The affordable housing approach is supported by the policies. A sustainable district framework plan is also supported by the policies. And also, notably, multimodal access and walkability improvements for Wilburton. And those will include things such as informing the transportation facility plan, and the update of that is commencing this fall. So these are just a highlight of some of the many, many things that the policies do guide moving forward. This vision is shaped by community. We've had the opportunity to build upon the vision, starting back with the launch with council of this initiative in 2022. We had your direction, and we've moved that forward as we've gone along. The work has been shaped by the input and insight of members of the city's boards and commissions, most notably the Planning Commission, which had, I believe, at least 16 different touchpoints with staff over the course of the last couple of years on this effort. In addition, we were able to facilitate and also support a variety of outreach and engagement activities and events, including open houses, walking tours, tabling events, youth engagement, and stakeholder engagement activities. And those continue as we move forward with the implementation and the development of land use code, et cetera. Many of these events were coordinated with the citywide comprehensive plan update team, so we've had the ability to speak about the future of Wilburton within the context of the citywide comprehensive plan update and the future vision for the city. And then finally, I would really like to note, on behalf of staff, it's important to emphasize how our One City approach has really contributed to the development of this comprehensive plan amendment that's before you now. This includes staff not only in our department, Community Development, but notably Development Services, Transportation, Parks, the City Manager's Office, the Diversity Advantage Team, the IT Team, and many others that would take me too long to mention tonight. But I think when Justin and I looked, we counted up at least 40 different people who've had a help along the way as a subject matter expert, helping us with graphics or events or whatever it is, on and on. So One City approach is really working well.
In closing, we do want to thank the city council for your ongoing support and guidance for this work. And now it turns to you to consider adoption of the ordinance that would implement the comprehensive plan amendment for Wilburton.
Thank you for that presentation. Let's start with the liaison to the Planning Commission Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Emile, Janet, Justin is lurking on the back, I guess, and Tara, and everyone else. All of the 40 people that you mentioned that they helped this is a very exciting milestone in the language of our Darren Carson and transformative moment that is for Wilburton TOD. I deeply appreciate all of the hard work. I also need to acknowledge my Planning Commission group. Many, many long meetings out of that 16. I think four of them went to 11:00 PM, and it's really truly show how much they care about this. So I'm very excited for all of this. As I think you mentioned, this CPA is a very high-level roadmap that will guide us to implement Wilburton TOD vision. And as you mentioned very concisely, that includes a vibrant mix of housing, employment, opportunities, services, all accessible by transit option like Light Trail, our East Rail Corridors there, and also hopefully at some point, very soon, Grand Connection. Mayor loves to say 15-minute city. I think Wilburton would be the envisioning of that. We also, in lots of policy, prioritize environmental improvements. As one of our public asks, walkability, bikeability, and also open space is one of the policies that we emphasize in this Wilburton CPA. Now, the Wilburton Comprehensive Plan policies will be implemented through lots of tools and ongoing collaboration. Land Use Code Amendment, LUCO, are currently underway. We heard from some of the public that they have some concerns about that, that we are going to address, and will involve discussion with the stakeholders. I am thanking them for participating, community members, and also it comes to Planning Commission eventually. I strongly support moving forward with this comprehensive plan amendment and urge my fellow council member to adopt the ordinance this evening. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, mayor. Just want to add my praise. You certainly heard it earlier tonight. But I think not only has the interaction with stakeholders been really positive, but I feel like I've gotten that same level of interaction, a lot of good information, a lot of good discussions. So I really appreciate that. This is really a tremendous body of work. I just want to be, you know, so we've had these ongoing discussions as we're talking about the comprehensive plan amendment, and there's ongoing discussions too regarding the land use code that's coming up. And I just want to, you know, make it clear or be clear that, you know, those discussions with stakeholders are continuing, and nothing we're doing tonight is going to hinder those, but maybe to the contrary, it's going to help support those discussions. So just want to be sure that I'm clear about that.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. This is an important milestone for the comprehensive plan amendment, and there are a number of tools to implement it, including the land use code amendment. We have a public review draft that has been out for a while. We're getting some great feedback on it, and we'll continue to have a collaborative process with stakeholders. We'll have a Planning Commission process and ultimately bring that back to council for consideration for adoption.
Great. Again, thank you, and certainly ready to vote this forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate the comments made already. One of the things that I think is really important, too, is the putting this together is a kind of a, something in the future we can use, a pathway on how to develop in other areas as well. And I think what you mentioned about how the, this is a holistic thing. It's not just a piece over here, and it's going to add so much to the city, but it's going to have a very positive effect on the rest of the city, too. And I think this is a very much improved way to go about doing this. I mean, the staff has just done a terrific job. And I mean, the council has been very positive on this, and we've worked on this, and the community has been. I mean, we always are going to have people who have disagreements in all this, but looking back on this, to achieve this tonight and getting it going is just amazing. I mean, it's just, it doesn't happen this way in a lot of places. And so I'm really excited about this. I did want to ask one question. You know, we got some information and some questions about climate change situation. And I know that, you know, from their standpoint, people who are interested in this, they think, "Why isn't this part of this?" But the answer, and just a second, I know you haven't answered that, but it would help to get people to understand how this all fits in, because we're also very much wanting to work on with the climate change piece. And the other is also that, you know, taking into account that updating in the future is going to go along, too, which is not something where, it's not written in stone that we can't change anything. And in fact, I think we've, over the years, have learned how to really do well with that. And we know that things can change so quickly. And so, again, I think this has been built into it. When I look at the whole piece on it, I think it's just amazing. And I'm very excited about it, very ready to take that vote and get going on this thing. And let's do it. And thank the staff very much. This has been just a fantastic job. And it's something that is a huge change in Bellevue. Meeting, and we are, we're meeting, we've talked a lot about meeting the standards and meeting the future. And I think this is a real huge step towards that. And thank you very much.
Yeah. And thanks for the question about sustainable district. Councilmember Stokes, Janet can offer a brief response to that question you had.
Yes, thank you for that question. Couple of things I'll point out that are in the CPA or the comprehensive plan amendment, the policy language, and then some of the work ahead that we're doing. And so, want to take, bring your attention to the vision section in the CPA that speaks in those opening paragraphs to the creation of a sustainable district. It's listed in the vision that is under that TOD area. So that is also supported by our Environmental Stewardship Initiative, which is another separate document, Long-Term Plan. And that's really where the idea was born. And we've brought, been able to bring it forward, incorporate it in the Wilburton policies, and then are moving it forward beyond the policy work. And that work is underway. So the other place where you'll find a number of policies specific to the sustainable district and sustainability in general for Wilburton is under the section on environment policies that begin with Policy 42. But it does, again, support, Number 42 in particular says, "Support the development of an environmentally resilient neighborhood through a sustainable district framework, code updates, and public-private partnerships." And then it goes on and on. There's four or five different policies under that environment section that all speak to sustainability and those things. The reason why we don't have a sustainable district framework plan as part of this is it really is something that is one of the tools that we use to implement, where this is setting the framework and that guidance that we need. And one thing we do talk a lot about, and I know this is supposed to be brief, so I'm wrapping it up, Emile, don't worry, is that things like environmental initiatives, ways to address climate change, green building technologies, they change and evolve over time. So we don't want to be so specific in our guidance document and our comp plan that we might eliminate or limit ourselves to all the great things we can do in the future. So if the speaker is still listening in, Ms. Braun from earlier, I would encourage her to maybe listen in tomorrow at the Planning Commission meeting, because staff from the Environmental Stewardship Initiative will be there and providing an update on the Sustainable District Opportunity Assessment work that moves forward at this point, or at this point in time. Great. So I'd invite anyone who's interested to tune into that meeting tomorrow. Good information.
Well, thank you.
Okay, councilmember Neuenhaus?
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. You know, I sense a little bit of frustration from Barbara Braun and People for Climate Action. So thank you for really kind of staying, or really encouraging them to stay engaged, and their voice is still important, and we're still part of this process. So thank you for mentioning that. I think those are kind of environmental standards which are important to all of us. So I'll echo a lot of what my colleagues have said already. Emile, Janet, Tara, everybody involved, Planning Commission, thank you so much for all the hard work. So that started back in 2018, and here we are. I agree with the deputy mayor, this is a kind of monumental moment here, where we get to move this forward tonight, and I'm very much in favor of that. And I just really want to thank again for the great community outreach, for really being open to all the feedback, especially as we heard tonight, not always on the same page, or maybe some differences of opinion on certain aspects of this comprehensive plan amendment. But you were able to really, you know, take in all those different ideas and opinions and make it work. I'm sure there's probably a few things that people might like, want to tweak a little bit here and there, but bottom line is, there's some compromise here, and everybody believes that this is a great amendment going forward, as I do. So, great work, and look forward to moving this forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers on?
Yes, thank you, Emile and Janet. We did it. We did it. Thank you. You know, I too... You know, I too join my colleagues in just thanking you for your leadership and persistence to get us to this point, and this work finished ahead of the rest of the CPA for the city. And I think that that's a really important piece to showcase that the importance of moving this forward, because the CAC's work did conclude some time ago, and so I'm just excited that, you know, to me, this is what, as you said, a one-city approach, expanded outreach can result in. We did have some really tough conversations about what the right height was, the zoning designation. To get us to the point where we now have this land use map that I would say that we're all very proud of, and having this new urban neighborhood is going to help us meet our overall city goals. So I fully support the recommended, really very thoughtful and strategic future land use map in the CPA. I think it will give us this walkable, vibrant community with affordable housing, sustainable district, transit, trail-oriented development. I was thinking about some of the comments we heard today, and then those from my colleagues, and what I keep thinking about is that this CPA is the first step, it's the springboard to the discussion and the other elements around housing, transportation, environment, sustainability. And I know that the spirit that we got us to this point will continue to guide us forward as we move to our land use code amendment and the other pieces that are very complementary to this. So I guess my only comment here is, let's go. I'm ready.
Great. Thank you, Counsel member Zahn. Counsel member Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thanks, staff, for working diligently and putting everything together. And, you know, as you probably know, you know, I've been on the council for a long time, this has been a project long in waiting. So I'm really glad, finally coming together, and because it is very important. To me, this is amazingly a major milestone for the city of Bellevue. It's a very proactive vision and product. Normally, city Bellevue is extremely well-positioned, always to be very responsive. We are very reactive. We, you know, are very customer-based. But this one, it's, you know, a product that connects downtown Bellevue to Belray Corridor. Downtown Bellevue is the first, you know, real center of a development. We know that. And it's taken a long time, you know, for the thing to happen, as we know the history of the community versus business. And then Belray Corridor is the first planning product that actually includes the transportation. I mean, there's very few planning projects in the country that has both transportation and land use together, because normally land use happens, and transportation have to just find its way. But we have light rail considered, we have cars, we have grid, everything is included. What's missing is the link, the connection that connects downtown Bellevue to Belray Corridor. Belray Corridor is the future development for Bellevue, with both business, commercial, residential, and all the other provisions that is included in our vision for Belray Corridor. And so what's been waiting is, all this time, is having Wilburton to bring Bellevue all together, all the pieces, and this is what's happening. So I'm really happy it's going to happen. It's about time. So thank you, you know, you are the one that's going to make it happen, and we're really happy to be part of it. And the only possible regret is that we don't have a piece of the Israel, that we don't have a state. We did not buy a piece of it. We should have, probably. But it's okay. Bellevue makes it work. Regardless of ownership, we, it gave us a real wonderful opportunity, like the things you're talking about, multimodal connecting south to north with the rail, trail, everything that would really make this area, the Grand Connection, to be a very iconic project. And I think this is really a good thing. So we are able to also learn from other places like downtown and Belray, and it can be an environmentally sustainable project as well. So I think we can make it work really well, and it's going to be very, very productive, unique. And of course, to do that well, you have to be talking to stakeholders. We've heard them today, how we can make it work better. So I like the idea that we have a vision, we have a product, we're ready to go, and we have, however, we don't know the economics of it. I think that's important to know. So by being nimble and being flexible, I like the idea of having some flexibility in it. I think it's being emphasized by the developers and the stakeholders. They are the ones that's going to develop it, you know. We don't, we're not a dictatorial country that we can do whatever we want to do. We depend on market force. I think that's the right way to do it, because they know how to do it right. And so I really think that this is a great project, and I'm sure the developer agree to it, and we have the support. So I appreciate the effort that you guys make of getting the stakeholders, developers, and the public and all involved that are interested in sustainability and all that. So this would be amazing product, amazing project. So I'm all for it. I just wish that we could do it sooner, but hey, it's much better to be late than never, and it's going to be a wonderful project. So I think we've asked some questions about maybe some details, like sustainability, how do we include environmental climate, you know, consideration, but I think all that's going to come. So we're looking forward to it because of the flexibility that we have included in our council discussion. So I'm all for it. Thank you.
Great. And then I'm going to ask one annoying question. So when we talk about sustainable development, seems like the state has put in so many requirements that all development has to be sustainable, but then if the state were to ever change that, we would still want to maintain some requirements in our own city. So are we relying on the state requirements, or do we have our own requirements?
It's both, in terms of where we're starting, our starting place with the Land Use Code Amendment, and so we're working with, the team has been working on getting up to speed on what is required today, what might be coming down the road we need to be aware of, and then in the amenity incentive system that we're looking at, and again, this is with the LUCO, we're considering what could be incentivized, what could be going above and beyond, where you might get some extra developable area or floor area ratio, bonus floor area, basically, for doing even more. So it's trying to get a sense of what makes sense to be incentives versus what people are pretty much going to do because they're required to do, and how to balance that out. And then additionally, thinking about how it can be adjusted over time as things improve, is there new standards, new ways of doing things?
Right. That's the trick.
And it's, we're so fortunate here, too, that we have our Environmental Stewardship Initiative team to work with us along the way, that we have our in-house experts to help us, and they're very involved with the work going forward.
Bellevue just got an EPA grant today for retrofitting our, some of our buildings, so that's super exciting.
That is.
It'll be interesting to see how you implement that funding. Okay, well, with that, let's have a motion to adopt.
I move to adopt ordinance 6802, adopting the 2024 Wilburton Vision Implementation CPA Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan of the City of Bellevue person, to the Growth Management Act, Chapter 3670A RCW, and Chapter 35A 63 RCW, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Second.
I think Counsel member Lee, you were trying to second first. Go ahead.
I jumped again. Sorry, thank you. Both of us can second.
All right. A second and a third. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, terrific. Congratulations.
Thank you.
This is a huge step forward for our city, and you're doing it in a timely way. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next meeting will not be until August 6th, because the next Tuesday is a fifth Tuesday in the month, and we're not doing a meeting on that. So we will see you all on August 6th.